It was a, that was a funny show. That was a funny show. Oh, you saw it?
Wow, and you're wearing it? Holy moly.
Oh, you did?
Uh-huh.
I think I was watching at like three o'clock this morning.
I've watched that quite a bit.
Oh, yeah.
I've watched Growing Ups all the time. Can't stop watching that. Growing Ups, did you ever see that?
A little bit.
Adam Sandler. Oh my god.
Is it a movie?
Yeah, it's fabulous.
I had to watch it because I love Adam.
That was a rough way to start, for sure.
Road basketball.
That was the first thing I tried.
Ham, Chris Rock, Kevin James. Like all these guys.
Oh my god.
David Spade.
It's called Grown Ups?
Grown Ups, yeah. And there's a Grown Ups too, but Grown Ups is the one.
Yeah, the first one's the one.
The first one's good.
He's, he writes funny stuff.
Came out of nowhere.
When he produces.
That was a good one, when your daughters come.
I haven't seen it in a while. I have to watch that again.
Yeah, when Rob Schneider's daughters show up.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
They turn their chairs around and they're sitting in the room like. You can't all look at them at the same time.
Like, yeah.
So then they start switching.
Right.
Okay, you guys look. Okay, we're looking away. Okay, who's looking? Okay, we're all looking. Oh, this is awesome.
That was fun.
Yeah, there's a whole bunch of stuff in there. It's great. There's stuff like mommy milk and Kevin James is just an idiot.
Kevin James, oh, he's so good. He is so good. He's always like, like falling and killing himself, and he seems to get right up again.
He was here. There he is. Okay.
Rob, can we write Will Taft on a, in memory?
What's that?
Can we write Will Taft in memory of?
I didn't hear.
Will Taft, can we write in memory of?
Yes. Yeah, and Adam Johnson.
And Adam Johnson, yep.
Also, did Aldo, did Aldo pants?
Uh, Willis.
Hey, did Aldo pants? Valentine.
I, I thought a while ago.
Some, uh, Amy Postle.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure a while ago.
Was it a while ago?
Yeah. A couple of weeks ago.
Oh, see, I'm.
Yeah, I think so. Pretty sure. Twenty. Young. Yeah.
Because my son said someone.
Good.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd like to call the order, the public hearing for this town of Shandaken Town Board for the 2022 preliminary budget. Please rise, the Budget Regents. Budget Regents.
Board Member De Scalfani?
Here.
Board Member Steen?
Here.
Board Member Storms?
Here.
Board Member Van Blarcom?
Here.
Supervisor Stanley?
Here.
So, uh, we're here tonight to discuss the budget. I don't know how many budgets presented last month. Uh, I'm looking at a 2.9% overall increase. 3% on the general, 3% on the highway. Water districts again, so water districts are going up because we have to increase costs to start creating capital accounts for repairs that need to be done. Case in point was, uh, the day of the flood. Last Wednesday or two Wednesdays ago, uh, there was a water main that sits on a stream bed by a historic bridge in Pine Hill. It's been a nuisance for us trying to deal with it and trying to coordinate, but Shippel got, got involved. And, uh, that's the state historic preservation office because of the bridge, and it made it difficult to do the repairs, so we basically had to leave it as such. Contained it as best we could with some rocks and some armament, but, uh, we knew it wouldn't hold up forever. A rock was to crush the, crack the pipe, the main broke, serving four or five houses on Mill Street, Pine Hill. So that had to be a major repair, emergency repair that had to take place. There's no other existing loop, so there's no way to provide potable water for four or five ounces. We were able to get a company to come in. They tried to drill bore under the stream, but hit bedrock. They could not do so. So a, what we're calling a temporary permanent solution. Ready dial is the pipe actually comes up out of ground, insulated, goes over to the other side of the stream. Uh, it's up away from the flood elevation, so it should hold, and it's away from the stream banks, so it shouldn't ruin for some time. And, uh, we should be good shape. A longer term solution will be looked at, but, uh, really the bridge being there, we moved it down further away from the bridge so it doesn't interfere with that bridge. But that's a case in point where we needed $15,000 immediately to do a repair. And thankfully they have it in their budget, so they're able to handle that. Um, but just barely. So it's good to know where at the end of the year, so we know where expenses stood. Ethan's done a great job with handling that situation. Water is back on as far as we know at the end of the day, so. As far as the flood goes, yes, there was several damages to several roads. Uh, we can get into that in the general meeting, but right now we're here for a public hearing on the budget. So let's talk numbers if people want to talk numbers. And do you have any questions on the budget? Don't all jump up the box. Again, I think it's a pretty good budget, even a little space in certain areas for emergencies as areas develop. Everybody this, this year seems to be in budget. There's some lines that are over, some that we mislabeled, but, uh, we'll do adjustments toward the end of the year. And, uh, if everything seems to be in line, we're on budget, so. Any questions? About our entertaining motion to defuse the public hearing?
Make that one.
Second? My favor?
Aye.
We can be at seven. Opened searing, I thought I needed this.
With the purge?
Yes, that's my wife.
Did you say the scourge?
The purge.
The purge?
How? Is it still going? Hi, Zander and Jade. It's my three-year-old's watching this one.
Sounds excited.
I'll take that, you know, after a couple of years, I figure I'll take that moment, just a second. Seven o'clock.
Yeah, so we stayed in, stayed in.
All right, well, that was exciting.
Got a lot of work.
Oh, yeah. That's a lot of road work.
Oh, my god. Oh, I got some stories. My son has put me some stuff in. Oh, I forgot to say hi to mommy. My kid.
Do you believe this?
The time you go to kick things to gear.
I mean, and then when I went to eat it, I said, okay, I'll eat it later because I can't deal with it. I took one bite, it was so overdone, I threw the entire thing out in the sky.
Terrible.
So gross.
Not good. Not good.
And I really want to recommend it because I love the way it looks and what they do. So I don't think that the new manager is going to get together, you know? Because the music was playing on the way to school music on the public table where you couldn't hear each other.
I missound all these big words and I don't know what they are.
You couldn't see anything without your phone to see what the food looked like.
Yeah, and then you're one of those people.
Yeah, exactly.
I'd like to call the order, the Shandaken Town Board meeting for November 2021. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Board Member De Scalfani?
Here.
Board Member Steen?
Here.
Board Member Storms?
Here.
Board Member Van Blarcom?
Here.
Supervisor Stanley?
Here.
I maintain a motion for previous meetings.
Make that one.
Second?
My favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Supervisor's financial report, I do not have.
I have.
Nobody gave me a report. There you go. Yeah. What was it? On your chair. Supervisor report, October 2021, vital statistics, $130. Zoning fees, $15. Cemetery plot sale, $400. Police fees, $15. Ambulance fees, $6,580.63. Town clerk easy fees, easy pass fees, uh, $177.50. Rentals, cell tower, uh, $646.15. Franchise fee, Time Warner, $16,971.37. Building permit fees, $2,195. Dog licenses, $50.50. Mail, $51.33. Pine Hill water rents, $10,000. Planning fees, $250. Heritage donations, $7,876.29. Highway revenue, $5,906. Nimer Capital, $2,580.2. Justice fees, $7,650. Marshall and Sterling, $509.30. MF Whitney, $5,385. For grand total of $62,079.09. Communications, I didn't draw anything up for tonight's meeting. We had our budget hearing just prior to this. We had no comments at the budget hearing. We did, uh, go through election night last night, so, uh, congratulations to the winners. Peter won first supervisor, Mr. Drake won first council seat, as well as Elizabeth Nysel for council seat. Uh, Grace Grant won for assessor. I believe there was a second gentleman on.
Steve Neville.
Steve Neville was also elected. Um, Tom Crusay and Mike Miranda again returned as justices. And Eric Hoffmeister is the highway superintendent, so congratulations to all the winners and a well, well-run campaign to the people who did, did not win, but, uh, you know, don't, don't take any loss, don't take it too hard and, and stay involved. I mean, it's good that you got involved in the first place. We can tell you, everybody that's involved in government that, you're taking a big chance. We know that, and it's rough sometimes. Takes a lot out of you and your family when you're out campaigning and putting yourself out there, but, it's well worth it and it, it really does have a lot of rewards, and at least if you stay involved with the community, you can have your input heard somewhere else.
And they're still opening on various boards.
Yeah, there are openings on various boards. Uh, we do have an opening that's coming on ZBA because of Elizabeth Nysel's election. Planning board, I think, they were accepting applications, but nobody's applied as of this time. It was a renewal, I think, is what they were looking at for.
Sam Spada.
For Sam Spada's position. So anyway, but there's always boards and always, and I'm sure the, the new administration may have committees and other boards that they're gonna have that they want members for, so keep your eyes peeled. But congratulations again to the winners. The flood, so we had a little high-water event, uh, which conveniently, I was in the hospital for and, uh, deputies on a work, a work excursion. Yeah. He's on vacation. So, uh, we were doing it by phone, and I think things went well. Uh, everybody that's been involved, uh, the ambulance, police, and the highway department, fire departments, all coordinated well. Uh, we coordinated with county and state officials. Obviously, there's a lot of work that needs to be done. They're doing a lot of work up in Olive Ria right now, county is finally, and we're grateful for that. Of course, there are some, there are some long-term work that's gonna have to be done over the next couple of years with many of the roads that got, put in disrepair because of the stream relocating itself. Um, but everybody made it out, life and limb, no losses, so we're grateful for that. And, uh, it was really close to being another big one, but, uh, luckily, I think we hit about 12 and a half on the flood gauge. Generally, about 13 feet is where we're gonna start tipping over onto Main Street Phoenicia and really pouring down there. So we just missed it, thankfully.
Six and a half inches, right?
Yep. And it was Olive Ria and Woodland Valley, you know, really got hit this time. So thank you for all the emergency responders and everybody that assisted with that and for getting the word out, and Joyce keeping the word out to the public again. It was a little difficult trying to get word and making sure that everybody knew what was going on, kind of, not to panic. Again, please don't panic in those situations. Uh, best bet is always go to your local firehouse. If you don't know where it is, find out, because it really is during a time of emergency, that's your base. That's gonna be your base for information. Uh, aside from that, as we just explained.
A quick thank you to Bel Air for opening and setting the lock on that case in the end.
Yes, thank you to Bel Air and their staff, who I know they were involved as well. We also had a water main break in Pine Hill, uh, during the flood. That's been repaired, and thank you Ethan Bernstein, the new supervisor for the Pine Hill Water District. And, uh, that was repaired within a day. We had an emergency repair, cost approximately $15,000, but it seems to be more permanent than what was there, which was a stream crossing by a historic bridge. So that issue may have been resolved at least. We have a longer term solution right now, but hopefully we can find a better full-term tempo of permanent solution for that situation now. Uh, aside from that, uh, we have budget hearing tonight. We have repairs that need to be done to the museum. Again, difficulty finding contractors. We finally got somebody and they're willing to do it for approximately 200 a day. Uh, it's minor repairs here and there all throughout the building that need to be fixed, railings, uh, sealants, uh, small, like I said, small repairs throughout the building, so they charge hourly, and we have a resolution tonight to approve that work to be done. And we also have a full-time officer that's being appointed. It was, he was part-time with us, and he's been doing the full-time hours. We had a full-timer that left, so we're taking a position, filling it again. So we're back to three full-timers again. Four, four full-timers again. And, uh, we welcome him aboard, because he's been working for us for quite some time, so it's, it's good to have him full-time. Aside from that, I don't have much of anything else.
Well, speaking about the, uh, flood in Pine Hill Water District and all that, so we did start a Pine Hill Water District Alert System now. We never needed it before. We also have the Phoenicia Water District signup sheet. I think just about 95% of everybody in that district has signed up. So we did send out a application to all the users in Pine Hill and letters to ask them to sign up, even if they are signed up on the Shandaken Master Alert System. This is a separate list, so we don't have to follow the rest of the town like we did the first time. And it was really great because Ethan kept in constant contact with me. He texted, called me at home, and, you know, we updated everybody. So, uh, people don't go on Facebook, they don't go online, so the alert system is really handy. So if you get this in the mail, Pine Hill, please mail it back, and, uh, we'll let you know whenever there's a problem, and you'll be the second person to know. And the only other thing is, uh, the DMV bus will be here this Friday, 10 to 1, 2 to 3. Woo-hoo. We went without it for 14 months. Everybody's like, hey, is it coming? Yeah, it's been coming a few months, so it'll be here this Friday. It's always the first Fridays of the month, unless we have COVID, of course, so that's it. Not much in November coming up.
Yeah. Also, that the, I got word today that the DOT is officially signing off on the Mount Trumper Bridge, that the project is complete under their terms. Uh, of course, we still have some issues that we're bringing up, uh, one being the intersection between 12 and the view, the view lines from the intersection going on to 28, looking across the bridge.
Pretty shy.
We've been, we've been talking about this for quite some time, and I think we're gonna be in the same situation that we were with Creekside Drive, that essentially, I think the best they're gonna offer is to reduce the guide rail height for some stretch on the bridge maybe, so that it increases sightline a bit. But apparently it meets all their visual safety precautions for sightlines and distance and judging. I, I question that, but it's kind of close. I mean, it's similar to the situation at Route 42 where they come up over that bridge, and you're trying to judge whether somebody's coming. You have no idea there, you have no idea what's coming on the other side. At least on 212, sometimes if you're coming on the approach, you can see if there's nobody there and you can kind of get out. But if there's traffic coming from Boysville, it messes the whole kaboom. So we'll continue to argue that. I also think there needs to be a street light there on that corner, so.
Yeah.
Uh, and then we got this land that's gonna be in Newtown Park, so I look forward to seeing what, uh, what comes out of that, and certainly would like to be a part of that committee or board or whatever.
Well, Rob, who maintains all the land with the trees and the grass cutting and everything?
Nobody.
So.
We get the area that's designated for the park.
Right.
Is where the cabins were. The other side, it just goes to pot, basically. It's going to woods. It's to be used for fishermen access only. And actually made a, an agreement with the landowners there. They asked that it remain wooded area, which is fine by us. It just stays, you know.
Right, but I, I, I actually was asking about around the perimeters of the, the road where they planted the trees and they planted all the grass, cuts all that grass.
That's them. That's DOT right away.
DOT, so that's the.
That's gonna be their responsibility, yep. Yeah, wherever they went to, that's gonna be their responsibility, and as I've said before, they don't, they don't sell land back to the private landlord. They just keep it. So they just are ever-expanding their, their properties. Uh, we've seen it on 42 where they needed some, did a parcel for fixing the bridge. It is what it is. So that's, uh, that seems to be complete and on to other projects. Uh, I think the next one is we're looking at Phoenicia. Is really for, uh, trying to get something with the Bridge Street Bridge and floodplain development there. We'll see where that project goes. I know county's been talking about the Bridge Street Bridge for some time. We'll probably have a little bit of discussion with them, serious discussion about work that's replaced there, and of course, I'm sure there'll be public meetings about it in the information session, so keep aware.
The Mount Trumper Bridge, are they talking about, is NYSAD talking about putting a street in there?
We're, we're trying to get them to do that. Uh, NYSAD's in, everybody went into limbo, you know, I don't know, a bunch of mass retirements. Uh, the woman that we had, that I dealt with regularly for 12, 15 years, she relocated to Albany for her final time there, and I guess she's getting ready to retire. And somebody new who I've reached out to several times, I haven't heard back from, but I've heard he's still settling into the position, so. As a regional coordinator for NYSAD. Uh, but we have been in touch with DOT, just touching base with NYSAD to see that. Outside of that, I have no other communications. So we'll go on to committee reports, and, uh, Mr. Rich, Mr. Murrallali, Yulalali, Yukalali.
Eight years on the board and I still can't say your name right.
Murrallala. Lala.
Mr. M.
Captain Lala.
Anyway.
One more month, Rich.
Yeah. It's October 2021, the 20th of Shandaken, total quality was 41, mutually was given once to the town under, we do not see any mutual aid. October was definitely busy for our annual service as compared to usual, and that qualify was not qualified by a planning emergency standby from 26 to 27 of October. Secondary, secondary was already easier. That caused moderate heavy wind and rain over 12-hour period. As the stream gauge cold broke at 12.4 feet at max, many of our area roads were threatened to drop. Couple that with downed trees and wires from wing, and trouble in this weather can turn to downright damage. Despite proactive measures by department next to the town, as well as fire departments, a close call was had around 8:30 PM on the 26th, when a motorist, motorist disregarded a very well-marked barrier on Olive Ria Road just before coming to hop, and drove their vehicle straight into an impassable washout. The vehicle became agotable quickly, and the individual was stranded inside their vehicle surrounded by cold, rapid thunder. Big engine fire department, Shandaken ambulance, Shandaken police, and a NYSAD crew that happened to be in the area quickly rescued the young boys. The outcome could have been much, much worse. The big takeaway from this incident is that a roadway is blocked or marked closed by any one of our town services. It is blocked for a reason. Generally, the reason is one that is immediately dangerous to the safety and well-being of those that may travel. Do not proceed around barriers no matter what the case. In this case, flood waters were moving with deadly force, undermined the road below, and didn't discriminate as to whether the motorist was familiar with the area or not, as the water does. According to the National Weather Service, six inches of water will reach the bottom of most gas cars, causing loss of control and possible stall. A foot of water will float across any vehicle, and two feet of rushing water can carry away most vehicles, including SUVs and pickups. Be smart, and as the old adage goes, turn around and don't drown. In regards to COVID as of 11/1, there were 274 active cases of COVID in Olson County. There are five active cases in the town of Shandaken at this time. Total cumulative cases in the town since the beginning of the pandemic have reached 139, with 134 recovered. We still have no fatalities, thank God. Total cumulative cases in the county have reached 19,386, with 290 fatalities. 18,822 cases have successfully recovered. Vaccination rates in Olson County have reached an impressive 83, 83.5% of the population above the age of 18, with 130,813.73% receiving at least one vaccine, and 119,050, uh, 66.7% receiving vaccine visitors. Thanks, Stacy.
Thank you. Building and zoning?
Hi, the building department issued $5,913 in building commitments this month, and planning board did 300. Bill is great. It's the building inspector doing inspections on Mondays and Wednesdays, which are a big one of events. And Tuesdays and Thursdays going for plan reviews, and, um, just a, it's been a big push for generators and roofs before the weather, and then a couple of huge new construction, full builds of houses. Planning board is still meeting with the Shandaken, their accessory structures and cabins, and they have a new applicant for subdivision. Is there any more to meet? Um, no applicants, but I think next month they will, I think somebody needs to vary, so we'll look at that, but it's been great having the bill up and running and working at full force again.
Um, Sarah, I just asked the generators?
Yes.
Watched generators go asleep for, sent to me, Eric, because we have to do that as well.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a flip.
Yeah, thank you. In Septic, everything that comes through, I check floodplain first.
Okay. Thank you. Police, Chief Story.
206 calls for service this month with 506 property checks. The resolution for hiring Troy as a full-timer, a career officer for Navy, shows a different career path. So he's leaving as full-time, he's staying on part-time. Troy's going from part-time to full-time, so there's no change in the budget for not paying. Just a spot.
Uh, Phoenicia Water, nothing to report. Pine Hill Water, I gave the report back. Museum.
Shandaken Historical Museum Director's report, October 2021. We've had 47 visitors this month. Thank you, Rob Stanley, for stopping in to turn on our hot water. Unfortunately, as of this morning, November 1st, there's no hot water again. Thank you Kyle Steen for finding a contractor to do the maintenance needed here at the museum. Kyle and Vinnie Sorbelini are a blessing to the Shandaken Historical Museum, and I look forward to working with them both in the future. The museum received numerous guests on the day of the Pine Hill Block Party slash Street Fair. We shared Pine Hill history on Main and Elm Streets with displays of past festivals and street fairs on the telephone poles in an attempt to keep people moving on to the next one and the next set of vendors. And Pine Hill history was shared on Main Street in a larger display in front of the Frame Shop, thanks to Jeff Rogers. We continue to post on social media and receive many inquiries from there. Thank you, Kathleen Myers, Director.
Thank you. Uh, recreation, nothing.
Nope, uh, the dog park's just about done. It's not quite buttoned up, and we still need to put some fill in where it's high towards the road, so probably gonna rely on the highway department for that. Uh, other than that, like you mentioned before about the Mount Trumper Park, we're looking probably to get that committee together and running, I would say, January. Looking at ideas, looking for spring, summer build, or, you know, kind of realizing whatever we're gonna do. That's it.
Again, just, uh, whoever does convene on that, just keep in mind the idea was that we were trying to spread around recreational activities amongst different parks so that we don't repeat them. Nowhere it spreads people around. If they want to try another activity, they could go to another hamlet and see another part of Shandaken. Uh, Shandaken Septic, I saw an email today. I'm not sure what it was about. But as far as I know, they were moving ahead with the extensions. That's the last I heard. So other than that, there's been no issues with Shandaken Septic as far as I've heard. With that, we'll move on to public comments and resolutions.
I have a question from a live viewer. I have a question from a live viewer.
Ooh.
I know. Well, I got a game show here.
I do that.
Uh, he wants to know if we've heard anything from Olster County Highway, why they're closing Plank Road from November eighth to.
Okay, we can bring that up during the open public comment.
All right.
Yeah.
Let's not forget. He might go to sleep by then.
Okay, that's fine. I don't, I don't think so. I think this, I'm hoping this goes fairly quick, I think. Uh, we've got no motions for tonight? There's no public comments? No? Okay. No motions, we're on to resolutions.
Resolution one sixteen twenty-one, resolution to play out all bills. Department of Budget and Control require town boards to sign and respect all vouchers coming into the town, including the number in total amounts from each body. Therefore, be it resolved at the town board authorize following vouchers paid. From general, thirty-six thousand one hundred and thirty-six dollars and ninety-four cents. From Highway, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and twenty-six cents. Phoenisha Water, forty-seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars and seventy cents. Pine Hill Water, one hundred and seventy dollars and ninety-four cents. Phoenisha Lights, five hundred and fifteen dollars and nine cents. Chichester Lights, seventy-seven dollars and forty-five cents. Pine Hill Lights, three hundred and seventeen dollars and sixty-three cents. Shandaken Septic, fifty-seven thousand three hundred and thirty dollars even. Heritage Account, forty-two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents. For grand total, three hundred and seventy-one thousand six hundred and ninety-four dollars and sixty-nine cents, and I move it to adoption.
Second.
Board member Discopani?
Yes.
Board member Steen?
Yes.
Board member Storms?
Yes.
Board member Van Barcom?
Yes.
Supervisor Stanley?
Yes.
Resolution one seventeen dash twenty-one, resolution adopting twenty-twenty-one preliminary budget as the twenty-twenty-two town budget. Whereas the town of Shandaken has prepared a twenty-twenty-two preliminary budget for review, therefore be it resolved, the town board of the town of Shandaken, following a public hearing held at six thirty PM on Wednesday, November third, twenty-twenty-one, hereby adopts the twenty-twenty-two preliminary budget as amended as the twenty-twenty-two town budget for the town of Shandaken, and move its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Board member Discopani?
Yes.
Board member Steen?
Yes.
Board member Storms?
Yes.
Board member Van Barcom?
Yes.
Supervisor Stanley?
Yes. Resolution one eighteen twenty-one, Town Police Department. Whereas the town of Shandaken is a town of the second class, and whereas there is a town police department, and whereas the town currently employs three full-time officers and is contractually required to maintain four full-time officers, and whereas a part-time officer has been recommended by the police commissioners to be hired full-time, therefore be it resolved that pursuant to the town law of the town in the state of New York, section twenty-one B, the town board hereby appoints the following individuals' full-time police officer to receive compensation as indicated. Troy O'Connor, twenty-one dollars and ten cents per hour. And that said, police officers shall have all the powers conferred upon police officers by the general laws of the state of New York, including but not limited to in such powers not inconsistent with law as are herein after set forth. And that said, police officers shall have all powers designated in section two point two oh of the criminal procedure law of the state of New York, which are the following special duties. One, to enforce all local laws, ordinance, and regulations of the town of Shandaken. Two, to enforce the vehicle and traffic law of the state of New York to the extent that police officers may be so permitted by the general laws of the state of New York. And three, to enforce such penal statutes as police officers are permitted to enforce pursuant to the general laws of the state of New York. And in furtherance of said special duties, police officers are hereby authorized the use of a town vehicle, to be known as a police officer's vehicle, which may be equipped with emergency lights in accordance with applicable sections of the vehicle and traffic law, and may use the state and county radio to the extent permitted by the general laws of the state of New York, and may carry firearms while on duty in compliance with the general laws of the state of New York pertaining to police officers generally, and move it to adoption.
Second.
Board member Discopani?
Yes.
Board member Steen?
Yes.
Board member Storms?
Yes.
Board member Van Barcom?
Yes.
Supervisor Stanley?
Yes.
Resolution one one nine dash twenty-one, Town Museum, approve repairs. Whereas the museum director has indicated that there are several repairs needed at the Shandaken Historical Museum, located at twenty-sixth Academy Street, Pine Hill. Whereas the town advertised for contractors to do several repairs, therefore be it resolved, the town board hereby approve repairs not to exceed two thousand four hundred dollars for labor costs to be completed by Vinnie Sorbelini, and I move it to adoption.
Second.
Board member Discopani?
Yes.
Board member Steen?
Yes.
Board member Storms?
Yes.
Board member Van Barcom?
Yes.
Supervisor Stanley?
Yes. With that, we move to opening public comments. Question from the live audience member.
Live audience. November eighth through November twelve, Plank Road will be closed by county DPW. Do we know why?
Eric?
Replacing two culverts.
Two culverts.
So those days, they got to drive around. So hopefully they got that. Replacing two culverts. Okay.
Yep.
Um, can you state where people can drive to if they live there? If they can get to Phoenisha, how far they can get in, the road?
One is right by, just over whatever it's, that means big, so it's dogs.
Right. Yep.
And then the other one's down, without a turn, past the, uh, the, uh, harvest days, thousands of people. You know, on the way outside, they might just stop.
Yes, and just outside.
Just about a half a mile.
You can get to, you can get to Mountain Laurel from the Mount Trumper side.
So most of you can get to from the Mount Trumper side?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's a, it's a small section there towards Phoenisha that's closed.
It's two culverts, right?
Yeah, and I think there's some, there's some part of the road that's falling off too.
And Big Indian, right? There, there's like a lot of road that's.
Big Indian, Olivera.
Big Indian, yeah, Big Indian on Creekside Drive there by the cabin, by Wayside. That's gonna take some time. They gotta, that's a big face, and they gotta, they're gonna have to toe in all the way down at the bottom of the stream to, to try to hold that entire bankman up.
Yeah.
I really don't know how they're gonna, and that's, I mean, I know what Frank, Frank Crankovic used to do years ago, he used to scalpel off that inside of that turn, and that's what used to solve it, but, uh, I don't know if they'll go for that.
And then Alvera Road, that's where the washout is that happened?
Alvera Road, and he's up there removing gravel from the streetcar in Alvera Bridge. Down, keep downstream, and it's, it's.
Which is really a temporary thing, but.
They're storing it down on a, not tramped it, and it's going out of there, and then crush it and then elevate it all over.
Oh, really?
So they did the first pass, and then they're coming back to do the second pass and do the channel.
Well, 'cause the, you and I know that the problem lies upstream of the bridge, where they got all that cobble packed, and it just keeps dumping into the stream there. I mean, I saw something where the county was saying that, oh, they just noticed that the, the river was higher than the, the road. I was, it just happened, or it's, it's new.
Oh, that's.
And I was like, that's, dude, that's been since Irene, before Irene, like, it's been that way, and it's ridiculous. We've been arguing with yous. I mean, that, what, that was before Irene. We were talking to FEMA over there about doing that embankment and stuff.
Where's Rick? He's so happy.
Yeah, I mean.
Oh, yeah, I know, I should, he should be up there.
That one was Rick.
I mean, it's, it's something else. That's a lot of dirt they're moving up there.
Rick, are you listening to this?
Um, any other public comments? Yes, ma'am.
A question.
Mrs. Rice, yes.
For Joyce.
Yes.
Joyce.
Yes.
Every town board meeting in November, even today, come get your signs, they're all outside.
I gave up. I thought they'd be gone by today, so tomorrow I'm gonna take a ninety-year-old man out with me and get the signs, but Ken's here, Ken will pick up his signs.
I'll, I'll get signs.
I can do it Friday. I was told that the town, uh, it wasn't.
Rob and I used to do it. Now they don't.
Yeah, I, I usually grab them from, from our side of town. Joyce gets them from that side of town, but.
Yeah, Kara got some.
I was in the doctor first thing this morning, and she had other.
Kara didn't know we were doing it, so she brought a whole bunch up. That's what's out there. Kara got those this morning, 'cause we didn't let her in on her, I was trying to contact and, you know, so we're just gonna get rid of what we can. So whatever anybody could get, go get your signs, we'd appreciate it, but they're gonna be going tomorrow.
I'll, I'll get them.
Or I won't be able to sleep tomorrow night.
I usually go up.
I, I do it myself, but I'm gonna be a.
Well, I just, I grab everybody's sign, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, I don't care whose it is, I'll grab it for them.
It's easy, so I just get them all off the road.
And they will be thrown out by next Monday, but they'll be out here till then, 'cause they can't be recycled, they have to go to a dump somewhere. The metal gets recycled.
The big ones, people gotta pick up.
Yeah, the big ones, you gotta get somebody to get those.
So, I, I mean, I can grab the one in Pine Hill, but you guys gotta get the other big signs off the road. Somebody's gotta, I can't throw that in the back of my car. It's just not gonna fit. So, uh, anything else? Any other public comments? Nope.
Oh, you know what I have to say? We did a fantastic event in Phoenisha, and you did a fantastic event for Pine Hill this past month, and we had a lot, a lot of new people coming through, and all those stores did really well in Phoenisha anyways, and, uh, we're going to do the event again next year.
Yeah, um, we had a couple of success. I think the, uh, the block party was a big hit in Pine Hill. Um, of course, we'll continue to work on that. I, I, what I like out of what's going on in Pine Hill is we're finally getting together as a community and starting to organize a little bit better, um, as a community, as opposed to me asking people to get together constantly. Um, so it's, it's much better, and they're taking ownership of it, so that's why these events are starting to go on. The block party was a success. I heard Phoenisha event was a huge success. Uh, Pine Halloween was, was a big success as well with the trunk of treat. So we're, we're doing well with events, and I think.
And you have to tell them about the Discovery Channel.
Yeah, they, uh, sure, that, uh, it was a surprise to learn that, uh, Discovery was here taping to look for Dutch Schultz Gold, 'cause everybody's looking for Dutch Schultz Gold.
I know that.
Ah, you do?
Okay. Sarah knows where it's at. Her phone number is, she's on Facebook, she's available at the town hall most days.
I'm lost, but I do know.
Um, so anyway, oddly enough, technically, they were digging in the floodplain, so as floodplain administrator, I felt I had to go there and at least admonish them for not having their permit. Um, yeah, they were, they were flipping out. I talked to the building department, she said, I said, it's fine, we bust some chops, but, uh, met Josh Gates, very nice guy, really down-to-earth, if you watch the show, like, exactly like he is on the show. And, uh, yeah, they had a little scene there. Uh, I can't say what they found, I guess the episodes, it's gonna be the first episode of the new season, uh, so looking forward to that coming out. But they said they had a great time up here, and actually, a number of the crew members said they wanna come back for a vacation, 'cause they enjoyed it so much. Love the East Coast, love, uh, Josh himself is from Massachusetts, and, uh, they just love the East Coast, but love the area and definitely coming back, maybe to ski this winter, so we'll see. And hope they enjoy themselves. But, uh, it's always good to, to see these events going on, and, and even a television show coming here to expose us a little bit to the public is always helpful, and it's positive, you know, these are positive things that are going on in the community, and people see it and it adds to the quality of life, and just nice little things that go on here and there, so we look forward to more of that coming, and continuing success on the events for both, for all the communities out there, so. Aside from that, we have.
We're, no deaths in Shandaken.
That's not true.
That's not true.
Was one?
Not true. Um, we have two passing, so we'd like to adjourn in memory of, uh, William Taft and recently Adam Johnson.
I'll second.
Oh, thank you. Meeting adjourned. Have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Come on.